This family against Girls Catholic, it's a go gold event. They're gonna raise money for Braden, who fathered us here today. And my friend Jasmine has something about Twin Valley. They're doing some events. So we just wanna incorporate some of the things that other school districts are doing. So we just wanna show.
Well, actually, I've been in touch with Exeter's Mini-Thon advisor, Ms. Bollinger, who's on the list tonight for tenure. But at Twin Valley where I work, we actually, our Mini-Thon is promoting a Gold Out for our football this Friday. And so they sold t-shirts, which also then raised money for Four Diamonds for the kids. Together we fight pediatric cancer for the kids. And then even Mini-Thon promoted and gave us these really cool retro sweatbands that everyone can wear. So I actually contacted Ms. Bollinger today via email and asked her about doing a Gold Out as well at a football game. Unfortunately, Exeter has no more home games this September, but September 29th is when the community, Exeter Township, is really trying to promote a Gold Out as like an entire community.
Entire county.
Yes. And I said to Ms. Bollinger that I was sad that we couldn't necessarily raise money, but at least it would raise awareness and it would bring kids and families and more donate donors to Mini-Thon, which I believe they do in April, to raise money for Four Diamonds and pediatric cancer. So I wanted to just share what other districts are doing and also what I'm trying to help Ms. Bollinger do for her Mini-Thon and her group. And she had met with them today, so I will find out what they decide to do then.
Yes, I just wanna, you know, recognize that it is a big month for us and, you know, the township, we led the way. And I just would hope that the school district does the same for community-minded events like what Twin Valley's doing, like what the Girls Volleyball Team is doing. I just wanted Pete to just say a few words about Braden.
Hello. I apologize about my entire, sorry. You all look very nice. I apologize.
He coached you. There's your coach, right?
Yeah. So we all see commercials, we all positively know someone battling child battling some form of cancer. And shame on me for not recognizing that this is real, this is shit, this happens. Until my son was diagnosed with acute lymphoblastic leukemia. It was diagnosed at three years old. And it's been a long road. It's been a very long road. You never wanna see a loved one go through what they go through. And things that John's doing for his children, it's amazing. He's doing very good things. Like you said about awareness, again, shame on me for not being aware. I didn't, you saw the commercials, but I didn't hear what happened, not to my son until it did. And we're hearing more and more of these cancers of all different forms. And I think awareness is huge. I think awareness is huge because I couldn't have been the only one that wasn't aware. John, thank you for everything you have done for us. Thank you enough.
Chris, who leads the effort on the congressional side of the State House, just gonna say a couple words.
Thanks, Chris. Good afternoon, directors, doctors. My name is Chris Winters. I am, in my normal role, I am chief of staff to state representative Tom Capderum. And we are leading the fight in Harrisburg right now to get funding for pediatric cancer, but not using taxpayer dollars. We're actually doing it in a way that it's going to be funded here in Pennsylvania, at our four research institutions in Pennsylvania, by using checkoff boxes on your vehicle registers renewal, as well as your tax payment forms. But that's not what I'm here to talk to you about. What I'm here to talk about is what that father just told you. Seven kids today will die from cancer, and you're not gonna hear about that. That happens every day, 365 days a year. So you do the math. A lot of teachers in the room, so I'm not gonna try to do math because I'll screw it up, but, you know, you do the math. There's 46 parents who hear their kids have cancer. Why should Exeter School District go gold? Why should you proclaim Gold as September's Child Cancer Awareness Month when you get all these other requests from all these other people? It's real simple. You're an educational institution that teaches children. And right now, you have at least four children in your district, which is more than the national average per your student population, who are fighting cancer. County of Berks has almost 164 kids currently fighting cancer. We have one of the biggest per capita's in the state. We saw what happened with Lainey Brown. Everybody in this room was touched in some way, shape, or form about that poor little girl in West Red. She touched me, she touched, put a last around my heart, and I've never looked back. And I was 90. I was a political guy in an office for 20, almost 20 years, who watched those commercials and turned it off and just ignored it. Now I know. And now I know what these families go for. We need Exeter Township, the same way we got Muhlenberg, the same way we got Braden School District, the same way we're working other districts in the county, the same way we got other municipalities. We are trying to make an impact because this is our children. One out of 285 children will be affected by childhood cancer by the age of 18. And those that are diagnosed, one out of five of them will die. And if you unfortunately get DIPJ, which is a brain tumor, you, it's a death sentence. 99.9% death, and it usually happens within six to 10 months. That's the reason that we came to the school districts and are asking you to go gold. We're asking you to proclaim Child of Cancer Awareness Month in September in your district and join the County of Berks and the City of Redding and all the municipalities to urge your employees, your families, your students to go gold next Friday, 29th, to show solidarity to these families and these children. So I respectfully am requesting and asking on behalf of thousands of children across this country for Exeter School District, please go gold. Thank you very much.
Thank you. John, first of all, I wanna thank you for the work that you do as an Exeter Township supervisor and for the numerous hours that you put in and supported the community in the activities. So you made an ask for us here tonight. I'm going to ask the board, is this something that we can do?
Well, it seems to me if we're gonna do it, this would be our last board meeting, which is why, which is why I came, because I knew this was my last chance to talk to Dr. Phillips. So I believe if we wanna do it, we have to do it now.
I mean, why would we not do it?
Yeah.
Yeah. There's no reason not to do it. I think the only thing that I know in my review of this and another proposal is that we have many pediatric conditions that we have concerns about. And there could conceivably be hundreds of similar types of concerns. This is an important one, though, I would agree. And these gentlemen have made the effort to come here and I think have made it a major initiative in the county and in the township. So I personally wouldn't be opposed to, you know, motion for consideration, but I know that routinely we have, we have the business of board that probably interferes with our, with us being able to recognize every type of childhood condition that really affects our kids.
Am I to understand that our girls hockey, our soccer club is playing the, to the benefit volleyball at the end of the month?
No, Monday. Monday, 25th. Exeter Girls Berks Catholic, it's a home game for us.
Monday 25th.
And it actually honors his son, the events of that, his kid that he raised money for.
So we already, I mean, in this particular issue, we already have Mini-Thon, we already support Four Diamonds. This program's associated with that. I mean, it's probably associated with childhood cancer programs throughout the state or throughout the country, but I don't think we're setting precedent here by doing anything because we've already committed to do this. So I think, I personally feel like if there's a motion, if there's something we should prove, if there's something, some action we would take, I'd like to advance it if somebody wants to second it.
I make a motion that we recognize September's pediatric cancer month, that we make every effort to publicize that volleyball game that is being conducted to benefit the program.
Child of Cancer Awareness Month, that's the official.
Child of Cancer Awareness Month. Okay. Second. Motion and a second. Any discussion?
Well, I think that along with that, it should be, as we noted here, that if the Gold Out Day is September 29th, I think that maybe it should be that we're endorsing, encouraging, you know, participation of our staff and our students to show support of those, you know, that may not even know that we know about them. We don't know them, but we wanna, we know, we care about their condition and hopefully their best or other things. So I think that'll be more, along with encouraging, you know, attendance or supportive of 25th of the groupings, for show support to the Gold Out.
Any additional discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, man.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, man.
Okay.
Excuse me. It's something that, then, Dr. Phillips, could you assist us in saying yes in the staff? Yeah, allowing the, Chris was to know we're potentially, okay.
Our next section in the agenda is the approval of minutes. And we've got minutes associated with the special voting meeting of August 8th, board workshop minutes of August 8th, and then the board voting minutes of August 15th. And I move these three sets of minutes be approved. Second. The motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I have six treasurers report. I know Dr. Herring's not here. Is this you? Is you? I'm sorry.
That's okay. This is for Exeter Township School District's financial statements for the period ending 8/31/2017. The following financial statements are attached. A year-to-date summary of revenue and expenditures of all funds. Statement of assets, liabilities, and balances. Payroll and fringe benefits summary. Investment statements. And student activity and athletic fund. I move you accept this treasurer's report.
Second. The motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Mr. Fisher. Our next section is board policy. We have policies for second reading and first reading. The first series of policies, A through E, are second reading, which means the final approval status by the board. Just to go through those policy, first policy is field trips, extracurricular activities. We've got a code of conduct for extracurricular activities, interscholastic activities. We've got a policy on interscholastic activities and concussion management. So I'd like to, I'd like to, I'd like to recommend and move that the board approve those policies for second reading. Second. Give you the motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, I'll be, I'll separate them. Oh, there's two right there. But these were, these were first readings. No, this is second reading. Okay. Okay, yeah, I'd just like to clarify the one, a policy that is also recommended for second reading, it's out of order here, it's sudden cardiac arrest, policy 123.2. I also move that that policy be approved for second reading.
Second.
You have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, moving on to first reading. We've got policies associated with class size, alternative instruction, adult education, assessment system, homework, religious holiday, cultural activities observance. And I move that these policies be approved for first reading. Motion and a second. Any discussion?
I just have a question regarding this. The district shall strive for a class size goal, not to exceed the middle to high twenties per class. Is that where we are now?
Yes.
And what's the, the likelihood in terms of industry standard around classroom size?
As far as industry standard, district by district. This district has decided to do a middle to high. We've tried to stay to the middle, meaning 120, 25, 26.
And that's where we are now, and are throughout, throughout our entire system, we're at that level? Or are you shook your head no, you said yes?
At the secondary levels, some of the classes have to assist just because they are, and the way the schedules are set up, but I think that's a very good, you know, estimate of K to eight.
And you feel that our teachers are effective and can teach in an environment with that many students, or they let the students, depending upon how you look at it?
Yes.
Okay. Great, thanks.
Yeah, I'd just say too, I mean, I think the new policy allows some individual class decision-making that's associated with various criteria, like subject matter, type of instruction, ability of students, et cetera. So, so, you know, these aren't necessarily, you know, absolute firm guidelines, but they are general guidelines.
And these are within discussion with the principals?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, I also think it's important that we don't paint ourselves a corner here. I've seen districts that have enacted class policies that are definitive at one number, and as soon as you go above, you have no, you have no flexibility at all that calls for another class, another this, another that. And what's happened over the years is districts don't have the resources to accommodate those kinds of policies with those kinds of stringency. And so I think that this is very important.
I think the other things for this policy are what we call administrative regulations, and they need to be, if they aren't already developed.
They're being developed.
And they allow administrators to kind of make decisions that are based upon more specific information that might not necessarily be, you know, included in the policy, so.
I'd really like to see lower class sizes, K through three, because I feel that's the primary grades, and this is where you can catch children. But if you have 25, 26 kids, it's a little bit more difficult to do that, or quite difficult. And then we find ourselves remediation, remediation, remediation going off the line. And I personally would like to see smaller class sizes, K through three, because if we did, then I think many of our problems would be solved by those classroom teachers who have the ability to work with their students rather than 25. I think that's a big number for, for children, and we find that good.
Again, I would say I'm not so sure whether that's what we would include in policy, but administrative regulations would take into consideration student age and students' needs in consideration in their goals. I mean, if you read through the draft policy, you know, it does reflect that these administrative regulations will allow for exactly what you're talking about. And those discussions happen with the principals.
And in the policy that we're discussing right now, it says that special emphasis on primary classroom, all ones that will not exceed the lower to mid twenties. So there we're talking about classroom sizes of 20 or above.
Lower to mid, lower to middle twenties.
Yeah. Not exceed lower to mid twenties.
Yeah, and not exceed. And those are the requirements that we use to have teachers in charge.
Are you talking about when you say mid twenties, are you saying 25 is acceptable for first grade, for kindergarten?
That is the stated policy. I, we're trying to stay within the policy as well as provide what we can for the teachers to not have excessive numbers. If we, if we wanna change the policy, that's...
As a classroom teacher who taught kindergarten and who taught second grade, I can tell you that the lower, the lower classes that you had, the better you had a chance of getting all children on grade levels. I mean, I hear a lot about, we have a lot of interventions here, but that's after the fact. You know, you're having teachers that have to be employed for reading and this and that and whatever, math. And I think, you know, if you keep them small enough, those teachers would, would say that they could certainly do a far better job.
No, and I would agree, but I would say that this sets a ceiling. It doesn't set a lower threshold, and that lower threshold for any of these classes is subject to the, to the conditions that are laid out in the policy here, the age, the instructional levels.
I'd like to suggest, Pat, since this is the first reading, that when we come to the second reading, if you did make an amendment, that would address your concerns, and that would give the board an opportunity to either support or not support the idea that where we're getting at. If you're thinking about kindergarten and first and second grade, I think it'd be helpful that when we do the second reading, that you make amendment that reflects that we have awarding work down.
I'll have a look.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Do we have a motion and a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, now we're at business functions. Dr. Herring's not here. Another member of the...
Have we finished with all the first reading?
Did we talk about the assessment?
Just put the vote.
No, we didn't.
You better go on first reading. There'll be another opportunity.
All right.
Yeah, this is first reading, so. And any comments you have, Carol?
All right. I was just concentrating on this one part that I didn't understand, so that's fine. I'll put it in there.
Give some email, Carol.
Okay.
Okay, business functions. I'm gonna do that. Mr. Braden.
First of all, look at, it's recommended the board of school directors authorize this district administration to contract for bus transportation on an as-needed basis during fiscal year 2017 to 2018 for athletic, other extracurricular, and field trips. The district will utilize the bus services of VCIU, New Roads...
You have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Question. This is a guidance. Have we put together an estimated impact to the fact we can't use our own buses because of the way we should increase our, this my dad was? Any ballpark?
Well, I can talk to or speak of the experience from last school year, whereas for these type of athletic, extracurricular, the cost to contract out was about $15,000 by 100. And the per trip average cost for contracting out was actually almost twice as much as our in-house operation. So, so really, the impact budget, it's, you know, half of the $15,000 is what it's adding, but, but as far as this year, I really, we'll just have to wait and see. The trips, and I mentioned last week, there were about 35 that were contracted out last year. And that has to do with trips that leave within a window while our regular routes are being thrown. And we don't have any additional substitute drivers to, to do these trips. About 35. So I expect about the same. We'll see.
With the challenges that we're having for attaining bus drivers, because it seems like it's short, it's not just for actors, but others, do you feel that there's any way we can incentivize hiring individuals? Or do you think it's just one of those things, marketplaces, reducing the individuals for the positions and stuff?
Well, I believe how we changed the contract and brought back the scale where they, their hourly rate will go up to $21 an hour in four years, I think that will help us to entice candidates. We have discussed possibly a signing bonus. We do currently have two that are in training and waiting for their physicals, et cetera. So, you know, we are, as you said, it is a problem. It's nationwide. So we just have to keep trying and advertising, putting it on the internet, and just trying to target, you know, people who would be ideal. We just have to work hard.
We had a discussion of it, the executive committee of the IU, and at the start of the year, well, as of Monday, they were still 18 drivers short, so it's not just us.
Just, I know that in the athletic committee meetings, minutes that I sent earlier this week, there was still an issue around the transportation for the bowling team, and I was wondering if there was an update on that.
No, I don't have an update on that. And that is something that we have to discuss with Tom as far as the numbers go. I did talk with Rick, and most likely it would be a sub-driver that we have, a couple retirees or sub, and they will, we have to get a time. We don't know the time and what, when their practice will be. So we're thinking, since adults bowl at night, but probably earlier time, we'll run a bus, you know, after school and so.
The current ball for us this year is Ball O' Rama having been closed, and they now have to go out to Easters Lane, I think, so.
But we're thinking a bus and a sub-driver.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Okay, we have a motion and a second, so. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
It is recommended the board of school directors accrue some fund transfer of $1,500,000 from the general fund to the capital reserve fund 32 for the period ending June 30, 2017, and the necessary budget transfers among general fund accounts to support the capital project fund transfer.
Was that a second? Any, any discussion?
I just had a question for you, and is that, was that the amount that you had suggested last week, or I just can't remember?
It's lower.
Right.
Yeah, last week is 1.75.
That's what I thought, so. Well, I had, I, that's what I displayed, and that's the number that I, at that time, you know, I, I was the top number. I also indicated at least 1.5 million after not hearing any more about the state's budget and the impact that it might, you know, I don't know if they're gonna do anything with the education budget, if they're gonna negotiate some of that away. So that's why I decided to put it at the 1.5 million as a leverage, so. But it was, the presentation included 1.75 million.
So you're, you're satisfied with this?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm gonna, well, I'm opposed to the increase. I think the original plan was transferring $900,000. Yeah. And the increase to 1.5 million is based on the increase in the fund balance from last year. I'd rather see the increase, the surplus funds, put back into the general fund budget or remain there because first, this year's budget was built on a deficit model, expenditure exceeding revenue for this year. And second, not knowing whether the state will fulfill its obligations, at this point, I feel more comfortable that we went back to the, the original $100,000 to be transferred instead of this increased amount. I think that's a good idea?
Well, if you want to change, that's a benefit.
Yeah, all right. So I'll, I'll move that we... So, I'll move that we amend this motion to reflect a fund transfer of $900,000 from the General Fund to the Capital Reserve Fund.
Second. We have a motion and a second for an amendment to the original motion, reducing it from 1,500 to 900,000?
Yes.
Any discussion?
Mr. Brey, if, say, we do not need that money then at the end of the year, because the state has finally come across with a good budget for us, would you then think that we might put that in Capital Reserve, or would you still like to have only 900,000?
Well, I'll leave that for the next board to decide at the end of the year. I mean, I assume the annual budget would be surplus funds at the end of this year for the following year.
I think it's a good idea not to put it all in the Capital Reserve, but then you can't give it out, right, Ian? Once it's in there, except for you, for projects and the school business.
Well, and I want to remind everyone that when it's in Capital Reserve, you can use those funds to purchase vehicles, you can use it to purchase technology, and small capital projects. So, it's... There's flexibility there in terms of, you know, you don't always have to use General Fund for vehicles, you don't always have to use General Fund for technology, you can use Capital Reserve. So, it's really just a matter of supporting the capital project plan that over the next five to six years will be 11.7 million, that is estimated, are slated for maintenance projects. And it's common practice to move excess funds to Capital Reserve, again, reduces what borrowing may or may not occur over the next several years.
Yeah, I have a comment here. I really think what we're going through here is symptomatic of a problem that I see about our operation. And I think we really need to sort of do some introspection and start to concern ourselves. We should be concerned over what happens at some of these board meetings. We've hired Mrs. Guydich. I don't think there's any reason why we shouldn't have confidence in the recommendations that she brings to these boards. I have always seen her to be extremely cautious, and she treats the money of this board just like it's hers. I don't understand why we would second-guess this. I think that the original motion should stay.
Any additional discussion?
I actually agree with Mr. Dusinger. I respect Mrs. Guydich's presentation inasmuch as it's relatively flexible. If we have to have it to be flexible to get material, to get equipment, then it should go into the Capital Reserve Fund.
I too will be voting against this amendment, because I do, I work with Anne quite often as a treasurer, and I do believe that she does treat the budget, our budget, just like it would be her own at home. So, I accept and agree with Anne's position.
Any additional discussion? Okay, all in favor of the amended motion? Please say aye.
Aye.
Who's opposed?
No.
The amendment does not pass?
So, we're back to the...
I would like to recommend another amendment. I don't see this as a reflection on Mrs. Guydich's capabilities. I've worked with many CFOs in my 32 years as a professional, and I believe she's one of the most talented financial executives that I've ever worked with. But this isn't an issue about Mrs. Guydich and her capabilities, it's an issue about our taxpayers. So, I do want to thank the school district for its financial management over the years. Costs were closely managed, and a few things went our way this year, and we had a significant unexpected budget surplus. That's why this motion's even on the agenda. In my time on the board, we have preached the community about the diligence we take in managing our budget. Despite having to deal with all the unfunded mandates, unplanned for repairs, and just the general increase in operating expenses, we have shown that we are diligent in how we spend the money. Each potential spend undergoes significant scrutiny, and again, I applaud the administration and the building leaders for their efforts in these financial matters. So, I think actually, because of these financial controls, what we have in front of us tonight is a golden opportunity to actually take an action and show the community that we can back up our words. So, I would like to propose that we amend the motion in this way. The Exeter Township School Board of Directors agrees to a flat, one-time, $157.89 per household refund payable upon request made in writing with 60 days of passing of this motion. Now, I want to explain to you why I wrote it that way. What I've heard is I've heard people in the community explain that the people in the community who complain about our actions that we take as a school board are only a vocal minority. So, I believe that the way that this motion is written is that it enables us to benefit from what we believe is the majority's support in the community, because it gives the majority in the community, if there is indeed a majority, they would want to forego $157.89 paycheck, it gives them the opportunity to not ask for that refund. And for the vocal minority, they get a refund check from the district that serves as a testament to the board's commitment to spend only the tax dollars it needs to provide the children of our community with a quality education by offering innovative curriculum taught by highly motivated and talented teachers. So, I look for a second on that amendment.
A second for discussion.
I'd like Mr. Katz to talk about the weekend. Do we have the right to do that?
I honestly don't know.
Yeah, I honestly don't know either. I hope the school can come to that.
I don't know whether you have the right to adjust the mileage or refund money in the middle of a public budget. My suspicion is not. Let's see if the school can talk to her. In the meantime...
Just an interesting point. I will tell you, I had this conversation that the state of Pennsylvania would not permit charter schools to refund money.
Mrs. Guydich, do you have the note?
I do not know.
Mr. Brey.
Whereas I think the intention is very good, Mike. I look at the fact that we have an upcoming improvements project that we're looking at that will involve every one of our facilities, from Lorraine to Laos to Jackson Falls to Reifton to the middle, to the junior highs, to the senior highs, to the athletic fields. And with the fact that we do not have all that money in our bank account currently, this funding will allow us to reduce the amount we will need to acquire and allow us to make a payment towards that. And anytime we can reduce the amount of bonds we can have to take out, I'm more in favor of that, in the sense I think it reduces the future burden on all taxpayers. But I do appreciate the concept that you presented.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, I have a comment, actually, a couple of comments. First, when I made the comment about this particular move and our questioning of it, it wasn't about Mrs. Guydich, it was what I see as a symptom of poor governance, because we continually question all of the people that we hired to lead this district. That's not necessarily our role. What I would say about...
How do you represent the community if you don't question the leadership? I mean, I'm not, I represent the taxpayer as much as I represent anything else. I mean, I guess it's a difference, you see your role as being part and parcel with the administration, I see my role as trying to balance.
No, actually, I see my role as doing what's best for the kids, but I also see my role, and probably the most important decisions I made are who we hire in these positions. I think it's counterproductive to second-guess them on every move that they want to make. We have every reason to believe that what Mrs. Guydich is doing is fiscally responsible and fiscally concerned.
Any additional comments? Any additional comments?
Mike asked, how did you come up with 150,000? I took that from 18,000 households.
Well, there's actually not 18,000 households, there's about 10,000 in Exeter. So, but what I did is, the last time I looked, the latest numbers I had, and if they're not right, you can blame the town supervisor in the building here this evening, but I looked at 1.5 million, equally over 9,500 households, which was the last number I saw. If you guys want to go down to 150,000, and that makes a palatable, you're happy to do that.
I'd like to go on the record as saying that I'll be the first one to say that I think the school district needs that 150,000 more than I do.
Well, Russ, you're, I don't know if you've looked at the demographics of our community lately, but I'm sure that you're better off financially than most people, and I'd rather have them make that decision than us.
So, what are you suggesting? You're suggesting a referendum?
I'm suggesting my amendment to see if it's possible.
My only comment is that I'd be a little uncomfortable voting to approve this amendment simply because I'm not sure I fully understand the overall impact, both legally and financially, you know, on the school district, but I think it would require some additional reviewing consideration by our business office and by our counsel.
Can we table this motion?
No, I think we...
Mrs. Guydich, what's the limit on the transfer of the funds? In other words, I'm thinking the same thing as Mr. Dusinger, that we can table this to research if we can do it.
We need to finish, finalize our financial statements, and this entry to increase it by 600,000 has to be done for June 30, 2018, and our AFR is due to the state by October 31st. And our auditors are waiting for this, what the board's decision will be. And as far as...
So, what you're saying is we will probably not meet legal limits if we table legal format until next month?
Right, we need to finish the financial statements and submit the AFR on October 31st.
I'll call for the question.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to amend. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
No. Requested amendment does not pass, so we still have the original motion on the table. And that's, there's still opportunity for discussion. We do have a motion and a second. Is there any additional discussion on the original motion, which is to transfer 1.5 million dollars from the General Fund? Seeing none? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Think the motion carries? Is there just one or two? Two, motion carries. Thank you. I have seen you, Brey.
Okay. It is recommended the Board of School Directors authorize this district administration to accept a proposed vote from Conrad Segal for a third-year consulting services related to compliance with Section 6055, 6056, employer reporting mandate under the Affordable Care Act. Employers are required to complete annual filings and health benefit coverage data with respect to both individual and large employer mandates. The proposed consulting fee is $7,500, which includes all IRS filing requirements, employee notices, and risk analysis. The fee is the same as the prior year.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion?
Do we know what their position would be as a reporting requirements were repeated in full?
What their position would be? They jump for joy, just like we...
No, 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 I'm just curious if there's something that, I mean, I don't think it's new to everyone, but there is some interest in doing this. Whether it's political will to do it is another question, but I'm not sure that we would, would we pay them the full amount, no matter whether they did...
Oh, no, 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 we only pay after the work is concluded.
Okay, thank you.
Any additional discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
It is recommended that the Board of School Directors approves the property tax refund in the amount of $5,604.16 to Albert and Heather Shore, for the exemption granted by the Department of Military and Veteran Affairs for real estate school taxes due July 1, 2017, and paid August 14, 2017.
Second.
A motion and a second, any discussion?
Ian, is this legislation, is this a federal mandate, or is this a state mandate?
We're talking about the...
The military?
The military.
State law says if a service member is 100% disabled, that he can be refunded his property tax. And quite frankly, I've never seen 100% disabled that I begrudge it.
I don't begrudge it to them, but what I do believe that when the state has these unfunded mandates, it is thrown on the local taxpayers. I don't think any of us send anybody to war, or send anybody to the service to get made. And I believe, you know, the state, that they have these laws, I think they should find them.
With all due respect, I know too many of them that are walking around without legs that can't work, and I do not begrudge that money, and quite frankly, I'd give them twice if I could. Thank you.
Any additional discussion, Dr. Brey?
I do not, I'm, I am not saying anything about us, what I'm saying is the state should refund that money.
Any additional...
Yeah, just one. I hope that we don't, I'm obviously in the favor of this, and I just hope that we never forget that the person that we're talking about refunding the taxes to are a member of this community, and they deserve our support as much as this school district deserves the support of the citizens of this community.
And I do, I do have a question, actually. Does the individual, does family have to apply for this annually? Or once we make the decision, then until this other house doesn't come forward anymore?
I forget the, off the top of my head, I can't recall the length of this. There is, I think, three years? You know, I, I can get you that information.
I was just curious.
I believe it's permanent.
Is it permanent? I would be good.
I don't know.
It's noted at the county offices.
Okay, well, thank you.
I believe. If you find me wrong, whatever.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Mr. Brey. Personal committee, Dr. Brey.
Part A, I move that the Board of School Directors who send the appointment of Tina M. Ayk as a Reifton highly qualified part-time specialized learning support paralegal profession.
Second.
A motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Part B, I move that the School Board of School Directors approve or ratify the following resignations. Listen on to Part D, certificated staff, certificated substitutes, guest teachers, support staffs, support substitutes, and extracurricular staff.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion?
Were these because we didn't take action in August? It seems to be a lot of people that are stepping away. Is that sort of part of the...
The effect, those are the effective dates.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Part C, I move that the Board of School Directors approve or ratify the following retirements of Nicholas Anak.
Second.
A motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Appointments, I move that the Board of School Directors approve or ratify... Appointments, I move that the Board of School Directors approve or ratify the following appointments listed under Part D, administrative staff, certificated staff, support staff, food service staff, certificated substitutes, support substitutes, food service substitutes, extracurricular staff, and school health services. And...
You're limiting the...
I make a separate motion for guest teachers.
Okay. Sorry, sorry. So we have a motion and a second for all those included through that section of the agenda with the exception of guest teachers. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I move that the Board of School Directors approve the appointment of the guest teachers listed under this Part D.
Second. A motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Motion carries.
I move that the Board of School Directors approve or ratify the following leaves of absence for support staff and food services staff listed under Part E.
Give a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Part F, I move that the Board of School Directors approve or ratify the following requests for change of status for support staff and food service staff.
Second. A motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Part G is the list of course requests that have been approved. We move on to Part H, staff conferences. I move that the Board of School Directors approve the staff conferences listed under Part H, number one through thirty-two.
Sorry. Give a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yes. That being said, do you please explain the conference that you wanted to...
Sure. You talk about the Mass Effect Learning Conference. One of our goals for the comprehensive plan is to introduce this concept of personalized learning, and the administrative team has enrolled in a three-day workshop with, I think her name is Bea McGarvey, and she's one of the authors of the books that we had handed out to our administrators earlier this year, and we think it's going to be a great opportunity for the administrative team to get together and flesh out a plan as to how we're going to go about addressing this concept of personalized learning in Exeter. So we're very excited to go out there and work together and figure out what we're going to be doing. There's going to be a part two to that, where we come back and we'll be working with teachers and going even deeper into some of those concepts. So this will probably take the full course of the school year before we actually land on something that we're really going to go deeply into.
So in this personalized learning event, could some of those principles be applied or be shared with students? Or is that not...
Absolutely. The idea is to provide voice and choice for students in what they're learning, create agency, ownership of their learning, and just trying to provide them with more of a purpose, and put them in charge of their own learning path.
This conference gives us the ability to create that for the students for the personalized learning. I'd also just like to recognize the fact that in this agenda item number twenty-four, Mrs. Peja and myself are planning on attending the PSBA school leadership conference in Hershey on October. So it's not all staff. It also includes conferences for two board members.
Are you going to the conference, Dave? Or are you just attending the...
I'm attending the conference. I'm not staying...
Oh, okay. No, no, no. That's because I know sometimes people get confused about if they're going to the... That would be...
I think we're also attending a...
Yeah.
As well. So we're attending both the conference and the conference. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
That completes personnel.
Thanks, Dr. Brenner. Next section is student functions. Mrs. Kuchar.
Item A, we're just reporting about field trips within sixty-mile radius that have been approved. Item B, I move that the Board of Directors approve the following, yes, following field trip, Jackson and Renee Watt, grade fourth grade string students to travel to New York Symphony and attend classical kids from Long Island.
Second.
This is, this is a new amendment, I take it. Is that right?
Any, any discussion on the side? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item C, I move that the Board of Directors approves the request of Aaron Roberts doctoral candidate at Maculara University to work with our principals as he conducts research as part of his dissertation.
Second. Give a motion and a second. Any discussion?
And I assume he's going to share the information.
And I assume we have the... He can send up the principals that will begin...
Before it comes to...
Yes, yeah, yeah. Thank you. Okay.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item D, I move that the Board of Directors approves a tuition agreement between Opportunity School and Education Program of Elwin and the School District for Education Services for student two nine zero one nine three, beginning August the twenty-third through the end of two thousand and seventeen eighteen school year at a cost of a hundred and seventy-six dollars per day, or a total of thirty-one thousand one hundred and fifty dollars.
Second. Give a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yes, I'd like to ask Dr. Miller. I look about this school, and I see that there are, I think, thirty-three students enrolled in the school right now, and it's for grades one to eight, and it is an online learning. That's how we're going to do it, online.
At the elementary school?
At this, yes. That's where I live, on the, on the, on their website. Now, thirty-two thousand dollars is a lot for online learning, I think. Have we, have we looked into this school program?
Yes. The school is for students who decide, they may deliver some or a lot of their curriculum in an online environment that helps them diversify. A lot of students come in that come from all different academic levels, so it helps them be individualized for what the student may need at their actual level, but they also provide an enormous amount of emotional and social instruction for the students right there on their campus, and that's really the need in students.
Is this a new school, that they only have thirty-three students?
No, Opportunities. Many of our schools are very small, that are alternative programs, and Opportunities has been around quite a while.
Has it just come to Reading?
No. It's been up there for a while. Used to be in Birdsboro, at the building, and then it moved up to the Reading area, but it's been in the area for a while.
Oh. Because I'm, this is the first group contracted with them, isn't it?
But we hadn't been using them in a while, because not many of our elementary students we find place to score, but it was a student, we tried to align what our students' needs are with the particular schools, and that was a good match. All right, thank you.
Any additional discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item D, I move that the Board of Directors approves an act quartering program agreement for services between the Extratendrific School District and official PA Department of Education approved AED Watt Private Provider Rock, River Rock Academy to provide alternative education services for disruptive youth for the two thousand and seventeen eighteen school year.
Second. Give a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries.
Item F, I move that the Board of Directors approves program placement agreement between the Extratendrific School District and River Rock Academy to reserve five secondary student slots and three, one...
That should be three.
Is it three?
I'm sure it should be one.
Yeah, that's what I thought. It should be one elementary student slot for alternative education for disruptive youth for the two thousand and seventeen eighteen school year at a tuition cost of a hundred and fifty-nine dollars and fourteen cents per day for secondary students, a hundred and twenty-seven dollars and thirty-one cents programming per diem, and thirty-one eighty-three transportation per diem, and a hundred and seventy-five dollars per day for elementary students, a hundred and forty-three dollars and seventeen cents programming per diem, thirty-one dollars eighty-three cents transportation per diem, for a total of a hundred and forty-seven thousand two hundred and four dollars and fifty cents for secondary students, and thirty-two thousand three hundred and seventy-five for the elementary students. Is that thirty-two thousand, then? Is that for three students and not for one?
That's for one.
Is that, no, that is for one, okay. For the twenty, not the twenty sixteen seventeen school year. It should be twenty-six.
Well, that does, it just gives you a report that we actually had seven students and three, so we've reduced it.
Okay. All right. I need a second.
Give a motion. Give me a second. Give a second. Any discussion?
I have a question for you. When I was looking through the contract, it, I know, it looked like there was, there were five older students and one elementary student for six, but then they said that there would be, and they were being, they were paying a reduced rate for that commitment, but then over seven would be the regular rate, but they didn't account for the seventh student. Is that part of the...
Don't any, any say over. I mean, at times we can have up to ten, ten students there by...
I know, but the cost for the seventh student, would that be at the reduced cost? Because in the contract it says over seven students, and then the cost increases to the regular price. Yeah. So there's a dangling student in there, and if we had an extra place, then we should have the reduced cost. So if you could check it on it. Thank you.
Any additional discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No. Motion carries.
Item G, I move the Board of School Directors approves the annual tuition payment in the amount of twelve thousand twenty-three dollars and forty-five cents for student two two one three four nine to receive instruction in agricultural program of the Ole Valley School District in accordance with section one eight zero nine of the school code. The student is in the ninth grade.
Second. Give a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yes.
Mr. Briggs.
Is this student going to be attending classes on a full-time basis at Ole?
Yes.
I'm wondering if it was just twelve thousand twenty-three dollars for the IU enrollment, which I'm sure is outstanding, but the Cal was making a lot of money on this one.
Any additional discussion? Just out of curiosity, what would it cost to send a kid to Exeter? Our tuition rate? We don't have the I program, but we're at around ten-ish thousand? Thank you. Is that the standard tuition rate then, or is it modified in some respects because of the involvement in the, in the I program?
It's the actual instructional rate that PD calculates for each public school district for elementary and secondary. It's based on your prior year actions.
So that's always rate?
That's always rate.
Generally, okay.
Do we transport, transport the student?
We transport in the morning on weekends. Any, any, any additional discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item H, I move that the Board of School Directors approves an agreement with the Chester County Intermediate Unit for services to be rendered by the twenty-one Virtual Academy for full-service online courses, computer technology management from August twenty-eighth, two thousand and seventeen, to June seventh, twenty-eight.
Second. Give a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yes.
Mr. Briggs.
Looking at the contract that was provided by BVA to us, I'm looking specifically at the second point, the first line of this. Second point says computer technology management, and the second line of that statement points out that computer management fee rate listed in attached two thousand and seventeen eighteen marketplace pricing schedule, but I don't see that pricing schedule attached to this document. Do they provide it to us?
Yeah, we have a list, yeah, they do provide us with the listing of...
We didn't attach it.
To make sure it's here again.
They've indicated in here that if we have an issue with, if this unit damages the computer, and then they don't cover the deductible, that we are liable for it. Have we had that issue where we've been liable for any damages in the past?
We have been liable for computer hardware damage.
Large amounts of liability, or just small amounts of liability?
Define large and small.
Thousands versus hundreds?
I wouldn't say hundreds, not thousands, thousands, but, I mean, it's damage and lack of return and equipment.
If we find a student damages, do we then inform them they were excluded from the program because they've not made payment on their past due debt?
Now, I have to say, we really have little damage. There's not been much of a cost issue. Pretty much the IU handles all that, so it's not been a big cost issue. It's been more to return on the equipment, and we get charged for stuff that we can't return. Students in the program, they moved, they come back, we're trying to track them down. You know, a few kids a year, a few computers a year, two or three, we don't get returned to us, even though they are, that's ever to get them back. We do get charged for that.
When BVA came to Exeter, which was prior to, pretty much, a lot of people on the board, as well as yourselves, were not here at that time, they mentioned to us they were going to do an outstanding marketing program for us. Do you feel that we get an outstanding marketing program from BVA to provide information on the fact that we do have a virtual academy available in place of charter school?
I don't, I haven't mentioned, none of us were here. Many of us were here, so I don't know what they were referring to as outstanding marketing. So I can't really comment to, you know, what they promised. I can check them, but the marketing, a lot of time in marketing is Facebook and so forth.
Well, they have a brochure here, apparently five hundred shores, one freight run-up, two hundred postcards, two mailings, one live, and one virtual open house, one planning meeting with district administration, blah, 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 blah. I don't know if they've done that or not, if they've come to you for this.
Do you have any, do you keep track of the students that are involved in this? Do you have, how many, could you tell me?
We tend to average ten to fifteen a year.
Classes or...
No, it's the students enrolled, and when they're enrolled, they tend to average about forty-six classes with the years that they enroll in.
Okay. And then they get an Exeter diploma?
They, well, yes. They get R credits, and then they're going to extra, I don't know why they complete it yet.
So are they, they're taking courses that are beyond what we do offer in our curriculum?
No, these are students who, instead of going out to cyber charter schools, they want cyber school and work at home, and they're mobile, and this is the option that they have through the district to have a cyber, a full cyber environment.
Thank you.
Any additional discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item I, I move that the Board of Directors approves a tuition agreement between Valley Forge Educational Services, the Extratendrific School District, to provide extended school year services for students number two one zero zero one seven, one seven zero three two two, and one seven zero zero six eight for the period July five, two thousand and seventeen, through August four, two thousand and seventeen, at a cost of seventy-nine hundred dollars per student.
Second. Motion and a second. Any discussion?
Is there some reason why this is, for the July, August that's passed?
It was a contract that got missed in the summer to get forward. It's a moot point because it's already passed, and we already, you know, we're, but we have to get it in. but we had to get it in.
Thank you. Can you give me any reasoning why it's so much, $7,000 some dollars for like 20 years of service?
They have, they serve our most, some of our most needy autistic students, so I'm sure they have a very low student to staff ratio, and they, they provide extensive support for the day, and do a good job, and it's for our very high need students that are there.
Do these students come back to us full?
We have one student, we have a student who just returned from that school this year to our crossroads program at the high school, but typically the students have such high needs that they do not return.
Any additional discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
That's it.
Who's chair?
You have, Mr.?
Chair, this one?
Do you have any, oh, I tried.
Okay.
All right. I'm chair.
This is my.
I move that, that student 180193, a senior has been given, I'm recording, sorry, that this senior has been given permission to attend the Exter Township School, Senior High, as a non-resident student for the 17-18 School District in accordance with policy 202 eligibility of non-resident students. And I, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Kocher. Our next section is election of PSBA officers for 2018, and on the agenda, we have two candidates for president, two candidates for vice president, a single candidate for treasurer, and two candidates for the PSBA Insurance Trust Board. Not sure the best way to conduct this vote. I know all board members have had an opportunity to review the biographies of all the candidates, and I think what we intend to do here is just try to, by vote, determine our choice for these five different, these four different positions. Anybody have preferred mention?
Can you make a recommendation for one of them?
Well, my suggestion would be to be, since we all had the information, I think we've all made a choice, my suggestion would be to simply conduct a vote for each place where there's only two, and then have Mrs. Giesh submit a, you know, an election for showing that.
Yeah, we can do that, I'm just wondering.
That we support the, that we support the uncontested position.
Are, are people comfortable with just raising their hand if they want to vote for one or the other?
Okay.
Okay. So, let's start with the candidate for PSBA president, and we'll start with David Hutchinson. All those in favor of David Hutchinson, please raise their hand. See none? All those in favor of Otto Voight, please raise your hand. Otto Voight has that. Okay, the next is the recommendation for PSBA vice president, we've got, first one on the list is Eric Wolfe. All those in favor of Eric Wolfe, Wolfgang, Eric Wolfgang, please raise your hand. Three, two, three. All those in favor of Gary Michael Smedley, please raise your hand. Four. You have an abstention?
Yes.
You have an abstention?
Yeah.
Okay, so, that goes with Smedley. The candidate for treasurer, Mike Gossett, all those in favor of Mike Gossett, please raise your hand.
We're, we're releasing, we're, we want him, we want him to vote.
Okay, before we then. Candidate for PSBA Insurance Trust Board, Mary Ann Neal, all those in favor of Mary Ann Neal, please raise your hand. All those in favor of Michael Fasenito, please raise your hand.
I would think, I would stand.
Seven, okay. Okay, that concludes our voting, and Mrs. Giesh, are you okay to submit those results?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Next, item only aboard is curriculum programs and curriculum committee, Mr. Quintero.
Next meeting is 3 October, and we'll continue working with the comprehensive plan. This is basically the framework for the next few years in the direction that the district is committing to, so I encourage you all to attend.
Thanks, Mr. Quintero. Technology committee, Mrs. Peja.
The district telephone upgrade is complete, cleaning up location of phones as per principal request, and working with Windstream to eliminate unnecessary phone lines. Returning student portal and new student portal projects have gone well, and we are ahead of schedule for having student demographics verified. Back-to-school triage sessions were well attended, and our instructional technology specialists are hard at work supporting and implementing new tech skills with our teachers. One-on-one distribution to seventh grade families went well, and only a small population needed to be seen on the first day of school. Student insurance option for ATTOX is still popular. This insurance pool allows us to cover the costs of non-warranty damages. Fifth and sixth grade Chromebook projects is going well, students will eventually be able to take them home. We're shooting for the second quarter. A replacement IT technician is on the agenda this evening for approval. Robert Stipler will be joining our team from the Great Valley School District, and we are excited to have him.
That's our report. Thank you, Mrs. Peja. First county IU board, Mr. Quintero.
No reports, I really tried to think of something good.
Okay. Athletic committee, Mr. Chapina.
Now, I'll start with a motion, and then I'll move through two other issues. It is recommended that the Board of School Directors approves the establishment of a junior high girls lacrosse program for seventh and eighth graders to start in January of 2018. The Board of School Directors authorizes administration to complete the necessary steps, including registration with PIAA, to establish a team, and work with a parent group who will provide all funding and transportation for the team for at least a three-year period.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion?
Yeah, I would like a definition of all funding. We're not going to be on the hook for equipment, we're not going to be, I mean.
Well, that's exactly right, I mean, this is sort of a rule that I made up, which going forward, I mean, it's not, hasn't been approved, but I think we've had a couple of programs that have come to us, look for funding, and we find a year in that they decide that they don't continue to have the support, don't continue to have the participation, or need additional funding. So, in the athletic committee minutes that I submitted to the board earlier this week, we figured that with a three-year period, it gives us the opportunity to see how it trends. Sometimes we get parents who are very excited about doing programs because they have a child involved, and then that child leaves the district, graduates, and then the enthusiasm wears off. So, we thought at a minimum, a three-year period might help us understand, you know, what potential impact it would have on us if, if they come back to us and say we need funding. So, so this, the one question I did have, and I wasn't clear on this, related to transportation, was, I think, was the parents were also going to be providing transportation.
That's my understanding, I did include that in this motion.
Okay, yeah, okay. So.
Mike, they can't, they can't start, I mean, some, we've had other things start as a club first, but I assume because of the opportunity to compete, they're going to need to be associated with us to be registered with PIAA.
They have been a club, and they, to your point, Russ, I think, you know, these sports are now becoming the around things, and they're looking to move to a more competitive level, and they're trying to build, you know, into the high school program.
I have a question related to Title IX and the obligation of the school district to provide equitable resources for both boys and girls' sports. Do, do we have a comparable team of boys that we don't support and are required to be funded by the parents?
It's a good question, I don't know that answer.
Off the top of my head, I don't.
I don't know of any boys to do that.
Title IX is a little bit related to sports, it's numbers, and I would think we have enough numbers from our boys' sports, because this will be our 32nd recognized sport to probably satisfy the Title IX equality numbers.
Well, I know Title IX impresses on one of the opportunities in terms of teams to play and participation, but also the funding should be equitable, not necessarily equal, but equitable.
That's the kind we want, right? We don't fund them, we don't fund the other.
Right. You want to find a team that should take their funding away?
Mike, do you, do you know how many kids they have involved right now?
I did, Russ, I neglected to put it in minutes, and I don't have it off the top of my head.
I just, I was really just curious to see what we're, what we're going to support, that's all, what kind of interest they want.
It's quite heavy, if I remember.
Yeah, I, I would, I would think.
That's why they're moving up, because they have so much interest.
Do we know what the anticipated cost is that the parents are taking on?
Sure, Jimmy said the same thing, I did.
No, the reason I'm saying this is because others won't know, and at the same time, I may not recall in my mind, as I've been.
The parents' cost?
Yeah, so we're looking at overall for the cost of the team, are they looking at, they're pitching a 15K, they're putting in 5,000, 5,000, and so in three years, when they come back to us, and they feel that they've now reached another level, that they're coming to us to support them.
My granddaughter plays at the fifth grade level. Her uniform costs somewhere around 60 bucks, I think she spent about 70 bucks for her shoes, one lacrosse stick costs 100, and then when she became more proficient at it, it costs 250. And you've got other kids that have them, my grandson has one that runs about 500, so, but it's a very individual thing.
It's nice and expensive stuff.
This stick may not feel good to you, but it feels good to me. But the basic, uniform, 100 bucks.
So, I mean, in this sport, I mean, I mean, I would think in a lot of sports of that nature, individual players purchase their own equipment they feel comfortable with, but there should be some general overall costs, such as referee fees, hiring your coach.
No more than any other.
Entries in.
No more than any other field sport.
What are we talking, what kind of number are we talking?
How much do we pay for soccer?
Man, I think that's the point of the three-year auditorium is to assess the cost of every year.
But in three years, they're going to come to us, just like swimming did, just like the other.
But, I mean, we always retain the option to, to not approve, I mean, it's hard, I always remember Judy Schrank a long time ago saying hardest thing to kill is a school mascot, so I think the second hardest thing to kill is a sports program, an extra curriculum program that you started, so, I just, I just wanted to give us some room, so that we weren't committing right up front, that we were just trying to understand, I mean, if, again, the parents are critical to staying involved, we have, if you looked at, or if anybody had a chance to see, well, it didn't get sent to the board, so you didn't have a chance to see. But Mr. Legass submitted the budgets for, or the fundraising activities for each of the athletic programs, and they get to do a lot of things because they do a really good job of raising money, and it's important for us to know that they can continue to do that, and that, that three years gives us that chance. We don't have to do three years, I just made it up, but I was trying to give us some space.
Will the, the coaches be employees of the district?
The coaches are, no, I don't believe they are, but they won't be paid by the district.
Well, they have work clerks, as they're required.
I would presume that they would, but I think I can ask that question.
Yeah, we, we need, we need to require that whether we're, they're our employees, and lacrosse, similar to field hockey and very much like ice hockey and football, has a lot of concussions. What are we doing as far as making sure that the students are protected and cared for?
There's, there's a big difference between the girls' lacrosse and the boys' lacrosse.
Boys get helmets, girls don't.
Boys beat on each other. My grandson's at New Yorkburg, it's their first day, he hears a varsity sport, lacrosse, and they flag go at it. The girls, anytime somebody falls down, I'll take a knee, and nobody, and they're very, they're very.
Played by.
I, I was not getting it out of there, because I wouldn't forget. But they played by different rules.
Took the scholarships.
The boys, you'd beat each other with a stick and everything like that.
But getting back to my question on concussions, and to make sure the trainer's involved.
I think the only way you could have a concussion in girls' hockey is if you ran into the goal first.
If you bring your stick high, and you feel like as you're coming down, you put someone that can.
I've been going for three years and watching these games, and I've never seen any high stick in which to be ice hockey.
Obviously, they're not playing in the main line, that's what you're saying, these are ones.
The girls.
No, they're not being wired.
Is there any further discussion on this topic?
I decided.
Do you want me to, I mean, I don't know what the timing is on this, do we want to push it back a month so we can answer some of those questions?
I mean, it seems to me if we're recognizing the sport, and we're saying it's part of
the school district's program, I think it should raise, be risen to the level of funding.
So, you want to fund it?
Well, I'd like to hear what the cost would be, and maybe the parents could supplement what the district is putting in, but I think we're, we're just going halfway here.
We've had other, we've had other sports that we have gone through with the same, no funding from the school until the continued participation is demonstrated, and I, quite frankly, think it's a good idea. They wouldn't let me have my tour.
Well, I've heard, though, that Mike has said that the program's grown, and it seems pretty well established.
It does, and, and again, I mean, if we, I, I don't know, I can't recall if there was a sense of urgency to register this, I think Tom was trying to push it because there was some requirement, I don't know if we can approve a contingent on satisfactory answers, or if we need.
And maybe it's the timing of having to make the registration to PIAAA so that they could start.
I believe it's spring.
Tom was just, at the meeting, brought up the fact that they were scotchy on competitors, and the PIAAA got them into a league where they had good competition, but I think that was a good.
Well, I'll make a motion that I think can get them started, an amendment, that the, the motion end with the phrase "including registration with the PIAA" and to establish the team, and, and period, so that the last part that refers to funding by the parents is deleted from the motion. So, with that, we're establishing a team, but then next month, the, the board can decide on the funding, how the funding will occur.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, or it's an amended motion?
Would you like to make a comment about that, Mr. Katz?
No, I was just responding to a question.
I asked if there was, I mean, I, I'm totally fine with it, I mean, because I, I would rather the board have as much information and answer to your questions, if we can move the paperwork along and get that started and verify some of this information, I mean, we may end up rescinding it, the decision, but, and Tom's not here, so, you know, and rather support what Dr. Bender is saying and get some answers to. There's, I have four kind of unanswered questions here that I think we should answer.
Yeah, I have a good suggestion, Mike, if we, if we do move forward with this, what I would suggest, that the conditions that we're talking about be spelled out clearly so that all the parties involved know exactly what we're talking about, and what each party's requiring.
I, yeah, I think that's very fair, again, I, I didn't think much deeper than I, I felt like we were being switched once or twice on a couple of sports recently.
No, I, I think it's all a matter of perception sometimes, I think I walk away with a I think I walk away with a meaning, with a different understanding, because I got what I wanted, because I'm a parent, I'm really invested in my kid playing field hockey, and you know what, I heard you say this is never going to go away. You know what I mean? So I think this way, at least, it takes some precautions about some of the hard feelings that get created from between groups because there was a misunderstanding from day one.
Thank you, Ross. My only comment is that the way the amended motion is described, if I'm reading, I get the sense that the school board just approved a new sports team, a new program, and it doesn't clarify the fact that it's not going to be funded. So, in the way it's amended, to me, I'm a little concerned about how it might be misinterpreted. And I would personally prefer that we table the motion if we can unless there's some requirement to register, you know, the team. Maybe we could encourage them to start the preliminary steps for registration, if that's a requirement.
Yeah, I have a question. Tom's email to us was, like to get this done, this is why we moved ahead. I don't know how long it takes to register PIAAA. I mean, there's, it's a spring sport, so I would think there would be time.
Okay, well, we currently have a motion and second, I think, for an amended motion. Is there any further discussion on that? Okay, all in favor? So, would we have to vote down that motion and then somebody?
You have to vote on the amended first, that's correct. And then vote on either the amended motion or the original motion.
So whether the amended. Could someone else? Or not, it can still be tabled.
Or we could do table. Yeah. If we're going to vote on this, does someone have the amended motion?
Yeah, there's a motion and a second.
And we?
On the amended?
The amended motion, yeah, thanks.
Yeah, so is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye to the amended motion.
Oh, no, I wanted to hear it before I voted, Mike.
Okay, well, it's the motion as it currently exists, and it ends with the phrase "to establish the team," period. So, I'll read it. "It's recommended that the board school directors approves establishment of the junior high girls' lacrosse program for seventh and eighth graders to start in January of 2018. The board of school directors authorizes administration to complete the necessary steps, including registration with the PIAAA to establish the team." That's the. How about maybe just instead of establishing the team to completely, just we're voting to enable them to complete the paperwork associated with participation in PIAAA. So we're not really saying we're establishing a team, we're just, it sounds kind of dumb and bureaucratic, but the concern is that we're locking into. Can we resolve this and then maybe consider an alternative motion?
Yeah. I'll accept the editorial.
There you go, you can do that.
Okay.
Second is acceptance.
All right, so any further discussion on that amended motion? So we're going to end it PIAAA?
Yes.
Registering any team?
Good. It's a non-vote.
Okay. Any further discussion in regard to the amended motion? So, I just want to be clear, so the next, in November, we're looking at answers.
October.
October. We're looking at answers for Title IX, clearances for coaches, availability of trainers, including how concussions are handled, and we want to just be clear on the transportation issue and the funding issues as well. The first sentence of that motion still establishes the program.
See, why do we have to do this?
And that's why we're doing this.
How about if we just go with it's recommended that the board of school directors authorizes administration to complete the necessary steps, including registration with PIAAA for the potential establishment of the junior highs and girls' lacrosse program. To be further considered. Yeah.
Go ahead, you're thinking.
The funding of the October board.
The cost of the paperwork.
Is it paperwork issue, or is that what we're mainly considering? Why don't we just, let's just table, can we table all the things, just talk about it on?
Unless Tom goes back and says that must be known that certain requires.
I don't know, I think we have five pretty significant issues in our answers to, I mean, I don't, I see general support around it, but I feel better if we answered these because I think to Ross's point, if we're going to clarify the conditions going forward for any new sports, these would be some of those conditions, I would think. So, I think, you know, it might irritate some parents, but I'd feel more comfortable that the board had their questions answered. So, I don't know how we unwrap this whole thing. Can we just further amend this to table?
You can just, you can give Dr. Bender to withdraw the motion.
I move to table the motion till October. Second. Any further discussion on the tables? All in favor of tabling the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Can post? Motion, yes. Table.
Nice.
I had a motion tabled in 2011.
It's never come off.
Pretty good table.
Mr. Japan used to go through since then. It was a big issue. I was going to get a big head. It could get any bigger. So the next issue has to do with some stuff that's occurred over the last week related to the volleyball program. I'm going to kick it over to the facilities director, Mr. Brady, to explain, one, where we are and where we're going from here.
Yes, it came to my attention yesterday. Would that be better? I need a microphone. It came to my attention.
No, Jim, it's actually for the, if you're trying to watch.
I'll have to get my. It came to my attention yesterday that we had a situation at the senior high school gymnasium where the floor was damaged in the area of the bleachers. Specifically, the bleachers, when they were being returned to their at rest position, for lack of another phrase, where they're folded into the wall, the mechanism that aids in that, the machinery, broke. And when that occurred, we're not exactly sure who did it, but in order that the bleachers would be removed from the gym area so the next day the school area would be available for the classes, the devices were then pushed to the wall. And when that happened, the flooring was damaged in the area of the bleachers. We had the Miller Flooring Company visit today, and they gave two prices for repair of the area. We have one that is just a repair, which is $8,575. We have another one which involves repairing standing or finished, I would envision that's the total.
Entire.
Entire floor.
Standing and down to bare wood, repainting and refishing.
For the whole gym?
Entire.
That would be $24,600. So, because this has occurred, the volleyball team, unfortunately, when they're hosting games tonight and later this week, or possibly next week, until this gets finished and fixed.
That's not true. Tomorrow morning at 7:30, the company's coming out, I sent you an email to fix the bleachers.
And the floor?
The floor will be covered over by the bleachers. My main concern is in the bleachers.
And Ohio Bleacher will be back operational as of fall.
Yes. 7:30 in the morning, I sent that email.
Okay. So the bleachers will be repaired tomorrow. Unfortunately, tonight, there was a game where the seating was not available, but that's getting rectified, so we will not have a situation where spectators will not be able to be, and will sit down comfortably and watch their children perform. Unfortunately, this occurred, so what I need to then propose, and I'll do it now, is that we go forward with repair. I'm going to look to Mr. Persui for his recommendation on whether we do a complete repair or the repair, sanding or finish the entire floor. What would you suggest on that?
That decision would be up to the board, and I will give you as much knowledge as I can in that the repair involves removing the damaged boards because they're scratched past the laminate. So they're going to replace those boards, sand down to the bare wood in a 10-foot section approximately in that area, then refinish it, and then put one coat over the entire gym floor to maintain the appearance of a smooth finish. That repair will be visible. You will be able to tell that that was repaired, and I don't know if you saw the, along with the quotes that Miller sent, they also included a item in there about flooring, the finished ambering, where the finish sort of yellows over time and that it does take a long time for those boards to catch up, and that was their documentation that they sent, I actually have a copy with me. It's been my personal experience that sometimes it never catches up. So, you're talking about $8,500 for repair that you are going to see for the, at least the immediate future, and possibly longer versus a complete overhaul of the floor. I will say there are other sections of that floor where the laminate's missing that has been so for quite some time, and it would be an opportunity to redo some of the painting schemes on that floor as well. So, you know, if we're looking for a top-notch finished product, I would definitely recommend the full sanding and repainting, refinishing, if the board is willing to live with being able to see where the repair happened for the future, for the future, that they would make that decision under $1,800.
With the 10 feet, is it under the bleachers while they're out, or you're saying the repair will show even when the bleachers are out?
No, when the bleachers are out, you won't see.
And I assume whenever the public is in there, the bleachers are going to be out.
Right. When the, I'm not a forensics expert, but it's my, it's my belief that the floor was not damaged while the bleachers were being pushed back because the scratches don't go all the way to where the resting place of the bleachers are. So I believe the scratches occurred in the attempt of my staff or the athletic staff or whoever tried to put those bleachers in, when it started to malfunction of continuing to try and put the bleachers back in. So, when those bleachers are fully extended out, the damage is not.
Sounds like hail damage to me. I think you should call your insurance company.
Bill, where is the laminating happening, the delaminating? You mentioned that in other areas. In the other areas, just in small sporadic areas, probably maybe a square inch here, maybe two square inches there. I know at least three sections of, like I said, small, where, I don't know, maybe moving equipment around, it could, years old wasn't any part of this bleacher malfunction.
Is it causing any traction problems for athletes?
Not that I would make aware of.
Now, during the summertime, you had refinished the junior high floor.
Correct, and the senior high.
Was this the floor you treated at that time?
Yes.
So, those areas are still delaminating that you treated?
No, I mean, when I say delaminating, it's the, it's the construction of the wooden board.
Oh.
Okay? Our finish is fine, our finish is.
They didn't get hardwood, they got laminates.
Yeah.
Okay. At this point, I would recommend that we go with the less expensive repair for the fact that when we have spectators in the house, it's going to be not showing, whether it's going to have one color or the other, it's still going to be a safe surface for a student to play on. I don't know if we can justify spending the extra $16,025 for repair at this point. Anybody else have any feelings on this?
I agree.
What do you think, Ross?
No, I just, what are we talking, high school, right?
Or something, the high school.
Is it, was not the high school the one that was fighting?
Yes.
Right.
And we had a new floor, and we had a new floor then? So what's the age of this floor?
In 1213.
Yeah, okay.
So, five to six, five years is the laminate? Four or five years?
It's damage. It's not, it's not a wear thing, they're damaged sites.
No, but we.
Where somebody dropped something or ran over it with some equipment or something like that. It's, there are scratches from another time, not this incident.
Okay. With the situation that occurred, Rob, is there something now that we're going to be able to make sure that whoever's putting back the bleachers, they're instructed, if something goes wrong, just leave them in place?
Get some training that if it doesn't go back to, not continue to operate the mechanism because this is what happens.
Now, you mentioned Dr. Phillips, that the bleachers will be replaced, repaired tomorrow.
Repairing. What was the actual cause, was it the cables?
So if they're going to be repaired tomorrow and they're going to be left out, I take it?
Yes. Well, what's going to happen, they're coming in at 7:30, they already had the supervisor come out and look at it. We have two broken cables, one on the side, and as the bleachers were coming back or maybe being manually pushed back, the other cable broke as well.
They're actually chains, aren't they, Rob?
They're chains, and there was also a motor that came.
Yeah, that says that there's a motor as well, and what they're going to do with the motor, if the motor is non-functioning, they're going to remove an interior motor to the outside, so we will get consistent, you know, function through the bleachers. So he, I was on, I was there when Mr. Orzak was speaking to the gentleman, and he did say it will be functional by tomorrow afternoon.
So we'll move in and out. So it's going to be out there with arriving in gym classes?
No, it'll be able to move in and out. And we did ask them if there was any way today we could move them manually, and they advised us against that because the more damage would occur.
So, that's my recommendation, and I don't think we need a motion for that, this is a standard purchase that we would do through the schedule, correct?
And, Rob, in your opinion, how long will it be before we have to address those other areas?
They're not deteriorating to the point where they're not getting worse because then it's not an issue of wear and tear, it's not a failure of the system, it was other occurrences in the past that caused these damages, and no one's brought them to myself or tumbled gas attention. I saw them myself when inspecting the floor before they could finish down this summer. So, you know, it can, it can be like that for quite some time.
One thing, not to be bearer of news here, but the system itself is how old?
Which system?
The bleacher system.
I couldn't tell.
So it's something that maybe we need to start looking at, that update.
Are these wood, not a sub big matriarch?
There are wood bleachers too, and this is what we did at the junior high because of the bleachers.
They're listed as 1981 on the asset ledger, but I can't.
So we've got 30 years in this already, and it's.
Are there any splinter, splinter areas? I'm serious.
No, no, we haven't seen, no, we haven't seen any splinter.
Are regularly inspected because that's going to round up with the injured students.
The junior highs, yeah.
Okay. Well, if it's possible, if somebody would do a fairly extensive communication to the parents, I think that a number of us got a lot of emails from them today, and I think we should just clarify for them, you know, the process that you're going through. I appreciate all the work that was done today, I wish it would have been done sooner, but I appreciate all the work that was done today to get to this, so thank you.
Mr. Legath was directed to contact both the coaches as well as the parents, explaining the timeline of what happened, what the district was doing up to this point, and we're all at this point, as well as tomorrow to fix.
Dr. Phillips?
Yes, sir.
In response, I'd just like to point out, I know the board members know, but people who might not know, that the facilities department did place calls with Modern Fold, it was a constant contact with them from the Thursday that we found out until today. So we were constantly calling them, trying to see if we could fit into their schedule for them to come out sooner than their promised date of last week, which was this Thursday.
And I understand they were in Pittsburgh working on another district, and I also understand Mr. Orzak went to the extreme to tell when we had an emergency with the bleachers, and the person said, there's no such emergency, we don't do that. So he was trying.
And, again, I'll say that it occurred Tuesday night, you guys were notified Thursday, so that's sort of a problem to begin with. It just is ironic to me to lock up on today once we started sort of complaining about it as a board, so. Thanks, Mr. Japan. Next areas, legislative liaison, township liaison, Mr. Quinton?
Contacted the president's supervisors board, the, Dr. Hamburger and I both read the newspaper account Monday, where the library may be able to use some assistance in identifying some space. We've offered the township some potential space, they're going to get back with us with their exact requirements, and we, maybe it will work out and assist there.
Actually, Bob, Rob and I are going downstairs after the meeting and checking it out.
And, they're going down to the. And they're going down to inspect it after the meeting and check it out.
Just one other reminder, Rob, if you just invite everybody tomorrow to our comprehensive park, open space plan, it's open to the public at Reifton, thanks for letting us use that, at 7:00 p.m., be good to get everybody out there, see if they can make it. Open to the public.
Thank you.
Situation develops very rapidly when we're dealing with township.
Yeah. Thanks, Mr. Quintero. Burke's Career Tech Center Joint Operating Committee, Mr. DeShon.
Do report.
Facilities Committee, Mr. Brady.
Yes. It is recommended the board of school directors authorize the district administration to accept a proposal of temp them, weather serving technologies for the shore portions of Jacksonville Elementary Roofs, which are out of warranty, restoration project, which will provide 30-year warranty. The roofing project is part of the 2017-2018 capital project budget, project investment is $284,827, $284,827 and 85 cents, with pricing for the Keystone Purchasing Network Contract Number KPN slash AEP-A IFB Number 017-F, period.
Second. That's what it says.
Good motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Anything else, Mr. Brady?
That would be at this time.
At this time. Audit Committee, Mrs. Page.
I know the audit committee was here on September 3rd, are they finished, Dan, or...
They've finished their, they've finished their site work, now we'll wrap up some notes, some disclosures, and we'll start preparing the final statements, and I'll be preparing the NDAs. So November's probably the time, frankly, that we come to the board.
So at that meeting, the QDAs, you know, are able to come and listen to the audit report.
Thank you, Mrs. Page. Any requests?
Yes. This is for summary of September 2017. We have a total list of payments from the general fund of $3,472,059.32, and from the capital account, $26,372.90. Who that we pay up bills?
Second.
Good motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Superintendents report, Dr. Phillips.
Thank you, Dr. Hamburger. I have noticed from the agenda, EMI Resources is hard at work filling positions. At this point, we have an interview process ongoing for the elementary principal position. We are interviewing for a school psych position, and we have a pending interview for an autistic support position. At this point, all other positions have been filled. In the support staff area, we have the ongoing search for a crossing guard at Reifton. I know Mr. or Dr. Freeze would love to have that filled, but that's in a couple of years. We have a couple part-time instructional aid positions, two our positions open at Lorraine and Jacksonville, a cafeteria aid position in Jacksonville, one custodian floater, one full-time and one part-time para-aid position in Jacksonville, and four driver positions. All other positions have been filled at this point. A humongous undertaking happened this summer with our immunization regulations that were provided to us by the Department of Health and PDE. The staff did a tremendous job in providing communication with parents and working with the community as far as physicians in the area and free clinics to provide what immunizations that were needed, and at this point, all students have required documentation. In my visits in the buildings, the student staff are off to a great start, a lot of smiles, a lot of excitement. I wanted to amend what I had said at the workshop session last week, and I know Mr. Orzak is here to accept our congratulations on the podium, but I also have to add Bob Dara's name to the list. Both of them did a tremendous job working with the students on giving us the podium, and I think it's been great. I apologize for having the batteries run down on the mic, and that will not happen again, but it was a great job by the students, great job by you and Mr. Dara.
Thank you. We'll give you the same warranty as that roof 30 years on... It's well filled, it's...
Someone, even my hearing aid comes with lights-long batteries replaced.
Thank you, that's my report for tonight.
Thanks, Dr. Phillips. Any other, any discussion, ideas or comments from board members? Mr. Brady?
One question, unfortunately, I was not here last week due to business responsibilities. I think during that meeting, let's call it up, we're going to have a committee investigating the transgender situation?
Yes, we are, and we're in the process of scheduling.
At this time, do we have any female students using the male restroom, or male students using the female restroom, or are we going to lay that decision until this is all investigated?
I don't have a position to respond.
Yes, yes, we do.
Thank you.
Any other comments from Mr. DeShon?
Yeah, just a suggestion, and it would be to Mr. Katz, though. In my 12 years on the board, motions just seem to keep coming back and coming back. If at some point you could investigate the legality of Mr. Japan's earlier suggestion, I think it would be, I think it would be worthwhile for you to have an answer to that in your pocket or something.
That's the consensus of the board, I'll be glad.
Yeah, sure, I mean, I just think that, like I said, we just seem to keep bringing motions back all the time, so...
I asked him for the same thing, I'm glad you mentioned it, but I'd also like to know the answer to that question.
Yeah, I think it's important, I think it could save us a lot of time.
Any objection? Okay. Any other comments?
I have one of, I would like to, I only have a couple of months left on this board, and I would like to share something with all of you and just ask you to think about it. This was a note that was written by Admiral Sustek to me at the end of the 2012 campaign. Joe and I had gotten pretty friendly because we spent a lot of time at fundraisers during the campaign. If you remember, that was the year that I had an unsuccessful campaign for the Linnis Project. He writes, "Dear Russ, you have my deep respect for your courage in conducting your campaign, even more on your obvious commitment to work for the people. Knowing I lost myself, there is a little, there's little I might offer that you don't already appreciate, but please know that your willingness to serve and do what's right despite challenges that too often deter others from embarking on a campaign, remain of immeasurable value. Our nation and Commonwealth so need representatives who are both honest and accountable, and ones who embody the foundation of the American dream. Rugged individualism and alliance with our common efforts, a Commonwealth built upon equal individual opportunity, is why I am so appreciative of your efforts to provide that, and why I truly hope that you will remain engaged." And the reason I say that, in my 16 years of this board, I think I have seen recently more personal agenda items, more personal vindictiveness, and more pettiness on this board than I have seen before. And I just hope that we can sort of regroup and reexamine and reevaluate where we come from and why we're doing the things that we're doing. Thank you.
Any other comments? I'll accept a motion for adjournment.
So...
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
I agree.